Their own lives financially and then also just making sure that they can be contributing citizens to whatever community they end up in. So as part of that program, they have a capstone project that they're responsible for. And so they're basically coming to you tonight for the request of a permit and I will let them explain.
Good evening. My name is Madison O'Brien and I stand before you today representing Delta Magic Rising Leaders Program. Delta Magic Rising Leader Program is made up of me, Jalen Hudson, Miana Carter, Janiah Brown, Maja Hardison, Tyson Clemmons, Kelsey Gregory, LaKevius Matthews, Molly Lewis, and Brooke Harris. We are here today to propose an event that we believe will bring excitement to our community. As you may know, Phillips County has faced some challenges in fostering community spirit in recent years. Our group has come up with an amazing idea to host a city bonfire. This event will include an outdoor movie screen, music, hot chocolate, smores, and goodie bags. We believe this is just the beginning of future events that will greatly benefit our city by initiating something wonderful and wholesome for the community. Our hope is that this event will attract many people and inspire others to organize similar exciting events. We propose to hold this bonfire at the River Park along the Mississippi River. Thank you for your time.
There are questions. I'm not sure if anybody would have missed, but what we're proposing is to try to get a permit to do a bonfire this Friday at the River Park where we could do an outdoor movie and allow families, as they explained to Gavin.
I'd like to make that motion.
Ms. Harris makes the motion. Mrs. Miller's second motion. Discussion. If I'll get the department heads to go ahead and sign off, it's fine with me. I don't think they have signed off, but I'll get that done. So you don't have to worry about that. I'll get that done by tomorrow. I have a turn to you guys. So any more discussion? Miss St. Columbia? Madam Clerk, call the row.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
And Ms. Maxine?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the other guests that we have, I see Mr. Meadows in the audience, but we've all received an email from Station Owner of 94.5, Mr. Elijah Monday, and there's a topic that he wants you all to discuss. And I don't know if you want to do it tonight or defer it to next Tuesday. We'll be back next Tuesday. But allowing participation of the audience via Zoom and how you might do that. And so I wanted to broach the subject so you can tell me whether you want to do it now or we can do it next week with this.
I suppose the city attorney, he asked if you all would table it until he's here. So he'll be here Tuesday.
And he's out tonight because he has a city council meeting in Parkin and tonight is not our regular scheduled meeting night. But he should be here next Tuesday. But some of the things to consider is just the way it would be managed. And there's been some discussion back and forth on the email. So if you haven't had a chance to look at that, if you would, look at that so that we can talk about it next week.
Yeah, I would definitely like for us to place that on the agenda. Because I, you know, that's something that, I mean, I'll just be very frank, that's something I'm very interested in. And I did talk with Mr. Monday and Mr. Meadows, share, and I think that it would be really interesting. I think it would be a great way for our community to continue to be involved. I know some can't attend the meetings, but I think that there's a wealth of ideas. There's a wealth of information out there. There are a lot of citizens who, you know, want to ask questions in real time. And so if it is possible, I don't know that it's possible, but if it is possible, it would be nice for us to be able to slate 10 to 15 minutes of each meeting, you know, to allow, like they do on YouTube videos where you have an ongoing streamed video going on and you have people who have questions in the comment area and then you have moderators who can answer or provide those questions to us in real time. It's just a thought. Like I said, I don't know what the ability is or the capability of doing that, but it is something I'm interested in.
I say this to me, because I don't know, because the city attorney's not here, but for me, I think that, you know, if you do, if we did, if you all did decide to do that, okay, so you get 15 minutes. So what if the, this could go on and on and on. How do you, how do you stop it? What if there, I mean, what, there's somebody's first amendment rights that you'll be violating? I mean, it's a lot to look at. I mean, so if there, I think that's gonna be, it sounds like it's easy, but I don't think that would be easy. I mean, the council meetings are first and third Tuesdays of the month. We know that. I mean, if somebody wants to make a presentation, we, we have an agenda process. You call there, you get on the agenda, and we go from there. So I think that somebody just come in, so, oh, I got a question, and it goes on and on and becomes a back and forth, back and forth. So there, we have an agenda process and I think that's something we should continue to follow. Because other than that, we just go open it up to everybody.
I think of the process of vetting who the moderator would be would be something that if we, if we discuss what the rules and the parameters, because, you know, we've been in meetings before where there were various specific topics that came up and we had people in the audience who wanted to ask a question in real time. And like I said, I don't know that it's possible. I'm just saying that's something that I was personally interested in and hope that we can discuss it. If it can't be done, that's fine. But I think that it says, it speaks to our allowing, our allowing our community to be just a little bit more involved, especially those who really honestly cannot come. That's just, I'm thinking out loud.
It's a mistake.
I like the idea, but certainly I agree with the mayor. We don't want to open a Pandora's box and go into a long discussion. We, that's a good idea. I think we need to hear more from the people. We need to listen to what they have to say. A study needs to be of this nature and we can figure something out for a short term and sample it and see. And if it works, then we can go further, but we might want to try it. So that's a good idea.
I mean, even if we just tried it, you know, provided that our city attorney says it's even possible. But if it's not possible for legal reasons, Mr. Attorney Ethely could probably speak to this better than, than, than I could at this point. I'm sure he could, but if, if we could, it would be nice. If we can't, that's fine. It's just a, it's just an idea and a thought.
Well, what I'd like to do at this time is get us, I'm not cutting you all off, but since we're going to discuss it next week, perhaps you can use your email to hash some ideas back and forth. I think the main part is going to be to set up what your frameworks will be and how that will be managed. And whether there's a time limit for the moderator's clues, whatever, as long as we treat everybody equally, we'll probably be okay. But we'll just have to, we'll see what the city attorney says because we don't always agree. But, but framework is going to be important. How are you going to manage it? Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll put this top of the agenda for next week. Okay, all right. So on this, the rest of the agenda, we have two sets of minutes. We have, I think, two ordinances, two pay requests, and one resolution, which I think we can go through pretty quickly, but certainly I'd be willing to go to whatever page you want and answer any questions you may have. So if we could go to page seven, that's the first set of minutes. So if you've already read them and you're ready to go on through them, we can have a motion to approve the minutes as presented and go on. But on page seven, we have the minutes from the 22nd of October. And at that meeting following the roll call, we took up the watershed update. I'm skipping down to the middle of the page and the resolution was passed unanimously. There was a fire pump a donation and that was passed unanimously. There was a fire truck financing, which we had to update that resolution because the finance company wanted a recent resolution. That was passed unanimously. And then Delta Plumbing, Quarterbalm Plumbing, pay requests were approved unanimously. Then there was a tin carver invoice that was approved unanimously. And so those were the actions that the council took on the 22nd.
I'd like to move the, we adopt the minutes for October the 22nd and 29th.
Is that second, Miss St. Columbia's second motion? Madam clerk?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, then on page 10, the minutes from the 29th meeting, I'll just go to the, since we had a call, I go to the first item, Mr. Wilder made a report and then there was a motion authorized the mayor to sign the contract with Mr. Wilder's firm. It was passed unanimously. There was amended water ordinance, 16 and 24. And there was several different votes on that one. That was to set the water rates into place, taking effect January the 1st of 2026. And then there's a change, but as Article 3 was changed in January 1st, 2026, the emergency clause is January 1st, 2025. And then another date changed to January 1st, 2027. So January the 1st of each of the next three numbered years is when the water rates would be in effect. January the 1st of 2025 is the rates going into effect. January the 1st of 2026 is the CPI. And January the 1st, 2027 is the second rate increase or vice versa, one of those. So that they're not hit with a big increase all at once. On the roll call, the 5 to 1 to place it on the final reading, that was passed. On roll call, on the actual ordinance is 4 to 2, it was passed. And then on the emergency clause, it was 4 to 2, it was passed. On the sewer rate, it's similar to the water rate ordinance, which is ordinance number 17 of 2024, to place on the third and final reading, 4 to 2, so it was passed. The pass the ordinance was 4 to 2, it was passed. And to pass the emergency clause, 5 to 1, so that was passed as well. And then there was a motion by Mr. Ethely to take the rebuilding fee off of our customers. And there was a motion that passed unanimously on it. And there was an announcement from the mayor that thanks the city council for the cleanup efforts in the water and other items and express appreciation for each and every council member and encourage working together. And Joe St. Columbia requested more work to free up potholes. And that's the minutes from the 29th.
I felt the last motion was to adopt, both said submit.
It was?
Yes.
I didn't hear that. So, okay, good enough. Let's move on to, if we can go down to the water department, there's an ordinance that Mr. Ethely requested be prepared on page 20. Mr. Ethely, you should have stopped me sooner.
Well, I thought maybe I was, might have been wrong.
But this ordinance essentially says that the fees charged for any disconnection notice sent to, sent from the water utility, water sewer utility shall be charged as follows, zero. At this point, they're charging $15. That's the rebuilding fee. So do you want it at zero? Do you want a different number?
What page is that on?
Page 21. I said 20, but it's right behind that cover sheet.
I guess since I requested it, I'll move to adopt ordinance number 19 by placing it on the final reading, third and final reading, reading title on.
Mr. Ethely moves to place ordinance number 19, third and final. There's a second. Ms. Davis, second the motion. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the row?
Maxine Miller?
Yes.
Latoya Harris?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
And Ms. Davis, motion carries.
So it's on the third and final reading and the title of the ordinance is an ordinance to reduce the water and sewer utility disconnection notice fees as set in ordinance eight and nine of 2024.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Ethely moves to adopt. This will affect the motion. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the row, please?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The emergency clause reads, "The city council finds that these reduction in fees are necessary for the fiscal sustainability and operation of the City of Harlem, West Island public warranting sewer utilities and for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the City of Harlem, West Island, such that an emergency is hereby declared." The motion to adopt the emergency clause.
So move.
Mr. Ethely, move to adopt. Miss St. Columbia, we second the motion. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the row?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Davis? Motion carries.
All right, starting on page 23, and we were fortunate when we put this package together, that the, the agenda and everything flows in order. So these are invoices for leak repairs from Mr. Andre Crawford Plumbing. I'm trying to look at the date. That says September 5th, September 24th, October 4th, October 25th, October 29th. And I believe those totaled $56,000. The approved region pays them as the funds are available to, to pay them. On the loan, the hundred thousand dollar loan, we only have $3,400 left on it. So this majority of this money will come out of operating funds.
I wonder if we approve these invoices to take a chance to come back.
Ms. Davis moves.
A second.
These invoices, what is our number? Mrs. Harris, second the motion. Are there any discussions? Madam Clerk, would you call the row, please?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
And Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. On the Dexter Fortson, I have to apologize. See, I got an explanation several weeks ago, but I don't remember what it was. Yeah, Dexter Fortson, Bill. The last time we presented it, you wanted more information. And I talked to Said about it, but I haven't talked to him about a bunch of things since then, so I don't remember. It had to do with radios and you wanted more information on it because it's like $8,700. And so I don't remember. So we'll do it too. All right. So then we have a code enforcement ordinance, and I'll go back to the announcement stuff on page 59. So starting on page 60 is ordinance number one of 2016, which shows the current fees being charged by code enforcement for building permits, electrical permits, and also we put the occupational license structure in here. And just as a comparison, I'm looking at 60 and 62 at the same time. On the building permit, they proposed to increase the base rate by $25 to $75 for a building permit. And then each additional 10,000, each additional 1,000 will go up $1 to $4. On commercials to $125 and $4. Then on electrical permits, I believe we already charged in the 75 because somebody told us that we had to. So we already charged in this number of 75 and 15. And the other thing moved up incrementally from $5 to $7.50. From $2.50 to $3.50, that's $2.50 to $3.50. From $1 to $2, from $10 to $15 on those other two charges. And on the plumbing permit, same thing, went up $25 on the initial and then $1 increase in the other. Mechanical, the same thing. On the, let's see, mechanical $50, $2, yeah, went up 75 and 3. Zoning, they raised it $25 to $100. And that's demolition permit looks like went up from $50 to $75. Certificate of occupancy from $100 to, from $75 to $100. Your commercial fees, each one of them is just like code enforcement. And Mr. Cal Woodridge and Keisha Williams put this together, raised them $25. The planned unit development went up $100 to $600. So it's like a...
How did you come up with these new numbers?
Subdivision. The code enforcement employees came up with these numbers. The code enforcement people, Cal Woodridge and Keisha Williams did these. And I guess Cal has been going through some classes and some forums and things of that nature. And he kind of led the, the way on this. And there's one other increase that's in there, the occupational and business license. It did not go up for one to five employees at all, if I see it right. And then, or from, from one to 10 employees, it didn't go up. But over 10 employees, it went up $5 per employee. That's the only change.
What exactly is that? It says peddlers, $50 if you resign to the limits. What does that mean?
You speaking that way? I couldn't understand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Under occupational and business license fees, I didn't see that in the first ordinance. It's like that section isn't over there, but I'm just curious. What are, what is peddler, $50? What does that mean?
The peddlers are those food trucks that ride around, those pieces, people selling purses and all of those. Now, this wasn't on the other ordinance. Code enforcement just thought they should just put it in here and do it all at once. That's how it ends up in this ordinance. It was not in the 2016 ordinance at all. And I didn't find where it was passed like. Asked. And so they just, but the peddlers are those people who, Phillips County, City of Harlem, West Island addresses pay $50. Then the county, they pay $100. They from Lee County, Cohoma County, other places, they pay 2, 2.50 for their permits.
Okay, dumb question. So I see that there are some people who have what looked to be a yard sale every weekend.
Yeah.
And so does that apply to?
I don't think selling sues is covered by this.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about people whose houses have a lot of stuff
Oh.
around their house
Right.
all the time and it looks like they started a yard sale in January and it's still going on.
So I'd have to check with code enforcement to see how they deal with those. Yeah. Because they would be peddling and they would need a license for that, especially if they're not zoned for that, which they're probably not at their, their house. So they would need to get a peddler's license and they don't need, and I think even with the peddler's license, we're requiring them to be in certain areas. You know, like the Sebastian Street downtown. You know, like the Sebastian Street downtown, you know, at Hayes, Walmart, those places, I think they're required to be in the business area, even if they're peddling. So I'll check for more detail and have a response by next week on people doing extended yard sales, or what we'll call them. Such that we don't try to sound like I'm insulting anybody, but yeah. So there, any any other questions? On the proposed fee changes as submitted by code enforcement, it's an ordinance authorizing the increase in occupational and business license fees and permit fees and rates, and for all, for all construction and other services rendered in the City of Harlem, West Ham, that are under regulation by local and state laws. Any other discussion there? If we could place it on the third and final reading, reading the title on.
You just state the motion.
Huh?
State the motion.
Yes.
So move.
Moves to put, what, ordinance number this? Twenty-one or thirty, thirty-five to read? Ms. Davis, second the motion. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So we have a motion to pass the ordinance itself. I've read the title on it already. Ms. Miller moves to, Ms. Miller, Ms. Harris, second the motion?
Yes.
Madam, any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia? Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, this ordinance is necessary for the preservation and to protect public health, safety, and welfare of the City of Harlem, West Ham, and the fee adjustments will be necessary for budgetary and service delivery purposes. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after this passes. Can we have a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So move.
Ms. Miller?
A second.
Moves to approve, Mrs. Harris, second the motion. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia? Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we can go to page sixty-five. That's a resolution. And this resolution is authorizing the City of Harlem, West Ham, to change its payroll structure for all employees from bi-weekly to semi-monthly with the pay date of the fifteenth and the last day of the month. And basic, the 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 basic tenet of this resolution is to assist the city with this money management from the standpoint that we get a tranche of money on the tenth of the month, and then it's not until the twenty-fifth until you get your sales tax, which is a big tranche of money. You do get some other money throughout the month, but it's not necessarily a lot of money. And this would allow you to make payroll five days after the tenth, and then five to six days after the twenty-fifth. Um, the change for the employees would be instead of them getting paid every two weeks, uh, whether it be two months a year where they got three checks, is that they just get two checks every month. It's twenty, down from twenty-six checks a year to twenty-four checks a year. Uh, the, the, the goal is to move to, uh, direct deposit. And to build up enough money to do direct deposit. So this is the payroll change, which you have to, you can't change it within the calendar year, so we need to change it this year. Uh, we initially thought we'd do it by January the first, but this resolution said by April the first, which gives us time to make all the changes we need to make. And we've been seeking some vendors to give us some quotes that we can bring to you to see what they would charge to do the direct deposit and all that stuff, where basically the payroll clerks would get the verified time of the employees and submit that, and from there, the payroll companies would handle the rate deposit, uh, the filing of the tax forms, the paying of the payroll taxes and all that stuff in one lump. But also it means that we got to pay all that at once. Uh, we won't be able to hold Rob Peter to pay Paul. We have to do it all at once, so that's why we need time to save the money to have it ready to to do. And we should start seeing better financial conditions after the first of the year because we raised uh, rates where the water company will take care of itself, and sanitation will help with the general fund. So that's the proposal here. We need your permission to keep going. We've we've kind of started the process. We're talking with people who hadn't gotten very far just yet. Anybody got any questions about, you know, that? We last changed this during the time when I was the mayor, was from, it was once a week for what they consider low-paid people, and it was semi-monthly for police and fire. That was, they got twenty-four checks a year. And everybody else was weekly, and they said our employees can't make it, they don't get a check every week. And so we went this, every other week. But at this point, we'd be going to twice a month. And we give them three months to get ready, but our our employees will do what they're led to do, is what I believe. So.
I have some questions that I. I think would be better served off the record, so to speak. And so, um, if we meet next Tuesday? My personal preference would be to, uh, to take it up next Tuesday, give me an opportunity to ask questions that I have. And this will be of the financial people. So let me not talk to anybody else if y'all.
So you want to table it, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm asking. We just bounce it over to Tuesday. I I I'd have some. I I'm not really ready to formulate the questions, it might come out bad right now. It might get better the second day.
All right. So we can, we can, uh, table that by acclamation, if you like. Um, so the other items in in this packet, um, some of those were from the municipal league mag- magazine, the budget reminder. So on Tuesday, one of the things we'll be doing is extending the budget, uh, to the, to February the first. Uh, the current budget. And, uh, there's some Fair Labor Standards stuff in here. And it also tells you what you need to do at the first of the year meeting. So that stuff is between pages thirteen through nineteen. Then down under the water department on pages twenty-nine and thirty, that's a job announcement, which we, uh, have have published. Um, and there's a C A O response from page thirty-one to fifty-eight. And that C A O, the consent administrative order, is showing our efforts to comply with the consent administrative order, what we've done in terms of publication, in terms of trying to hire someone. I believe we've received one application for the general manager position, and we're going to get with, I believe Ms. Maxine asked to, uh, be one of the people that do an interview because we get two of y'all together, we got to have a, uh, notified press. And so we'll begin with you and and them to schedule a time to interview that one person, and if anybody else submits an application, we'll do that as well.
Can I ask you something?
Yes, sir.
Executive, what they call it, executive, uh, you go into executive session. Is that for hiring and firing as well?
Executive session is for hiring and firing. There's hire and firing, promotion, demotion.
But you can go into executive session, and everybody can do it, right?
Well, you, he's not an employee. The person would not be an employee.
That's why you would call it hiring. You hiring the person, he's not an employee.
But because he's not an employee, I don't think you could take him into executive session.
Oh, okay, I got you, I got you.
Right? But I could be wrong, I don't know.
I guess, okay. I was just trying to get everybody in the room, so everybody can ask questions, okay?
Thank you.
Well, I mean, if if everybody wanted, you could do a public interview. I mean, I, I, I mean, I was just thinking, we would get some people and one of them be a councilman, and one was Ms. Miller, she expressed interest in it. And then you make a report to to the body and a recommendation. Because because it may not get past the interview, it may be like, well, you know, this is the only person who applied, but this person is not a good fit, so we got to keep looking.
I thought the have, I thought the person who is seeking a job could could be in in the.
That may be right. I hadn't given it a whole lot of thought, but I hadn't given it a whole lot of thought, but I was thinking because he's not an employee. You can go into executive session to discuss hiring, to him or her, but I don't think you take him into the executive session.
Okay, I guess, I guess.
That's that's my thought. Now, I could be wrong, but, yeah.
I mean, if one of you, you know, one of you guys who are senior members, if, you know, you all want to do, I I was just interested a bit if one of you all wanted to do it, you know.
Let you carry that. Ms. Miller hired.
Okay, so with that, I think we've covered everything that's in this document. We didn't go page by page, line by line, but we covered everything. Uh, you got an email that I asked, was asked by the mail to send to you about, uh, an employee separation that occurred yesterday. Uh, so you can probably ask the mail about that after the meeting is over, if you like. Or y'all can go into executive session without me and talk to them about it, if you want to do that, but, uh.
Can we, can we do, I mean, if anyone else has time? I mean, I do have some questions. I mean, we can wait until Tuesday.
We can do now. I mean, we all here.
I I do have one suggestion before y'all take that that turn. Um, you mentioned the, uh, the budget. Traditionally, we do our budget workshops in January, and Mr. Valley mentioned it in extending the the two thousand and twenty-four budget at the next meeting. I don't see why we have to wait if we're going to extend it. You can just go ahead and do that now and get it out of the way. I mean, you know, I don't want anything to happen, and we, the meeting gets, and then we have to come out for a special meeting, but if the next meeting gets canceled, you know, anything could happen. We can just go ahead and knock that out now. Uh, it's mine. Y'all made difference. Move to extend the two thousand and twenty-four budget until February the first of two thousand and twenty-five.
If you're extending the present budget.
Present budget.
So we can operate in January.
Right. And then it gives us the full, I'm sorry, double.
Mr. Ethely moves to extend the two thousand and twenty-four budget until February first, two thousand and twenty-five. Mrs. Davis, second the motion. Are there any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. Miller?
Ah, yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yeah.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
And Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so, uh, now, Mr. Ethely, if y'all are going to go into executive session, you know, for the sake of the listeners and the newspaper and all that, we need you to state the reason and all of that before y'all go. And then Mr. Turner and me and Ms. Coaks and Joshua and everybody else will leave.
Was that requested? I mean, executive session? And it's to discuss the email?
It's to discuss the separation of certain employees from the five part.
So, um, we we guess we need a motion to go into executive session to discuss the, uh, termination of an employee.
So move.
Ms. Miller moves to go into executive session. There's a second. Mr. St. Columbia, second the motion. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia? Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
And Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
into regular session.
We said we go back to executive section, we say level six. That's good.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Herr?
Yes.
Mrs. Sackland?
Yeah.
Mr. Appleby?
Yes.
And Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Well, then I appreciate you taking in executive session.
No, sir.
No, I can't take it.
All right. Um, Ms. Mills dropped the resolution off and I told her we just deal with it Tuesday. Uh, so we remain. You got something you need to pass out, man?
Uh, no, 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 uh.
So.
Uh, just before. Uh, the airport, these commissions, we started talking about these commission, air airport commission. Uh, I get to choose one person. Um, so I'm gonna choose a person. I'll put it to them. Just for the airport commission.
Okay, so that's how many members on that commission? Okay, so you're you're keeping the five intact and then?
This, I, I, I know, I think Mrs. Zaporah Mondays and she's, then needs to finish her turn with the rest of people. You know, which I, I, you all will pick some people, know next to people, but one other place.
Okay. Yeah, can we talk about that? Because I, I mean, when you start starting all over with new people on stuff like that.
You, you, you can, I'm not, I'm just gonna choose somebody. It, it, it's, it's no flow as I always have. You got, you got to choose a pilot. You gotta have pilots like, so this, this, these people were, you just have another section of people to choose from. So if you decide to keep, I mean, what, what are my reflection is, you, you all up and down it, but.
Yeah, Ms. Miller, the mayor gives one appointment solitary, only him. The other four are appointed by the mayor and the council.
Oh, okay.
So I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna pick somebody.
I mean, I was, I was just wondering.
Yeah, so I, I was just making that plan. He just, he gets one all on his own, the other four, the council and the man, so.
And her turn?
Well, no, 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 I was, she is into it, but I want to keep her. Uh, because she doesn't, I mean, you ought to have a choice. I just wanted to know that I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and pick somebody, so one person, yeah, unless you not have the rest of, unless the next one you are.
Okay, but theoretically, like, we could keep everybody in.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, you, you can't, but I think it's time. She's just young, you want to keep, try to keep somebody, a senior person, and get some younger people who, you know, for that reason.
She got a lot of students.
That, that's it. She's, she's, but she, she's staying.
I have a question about the truck you were talking about.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, so, um, truck number fifty-five, uh, I've sent you pictures and stuff. That was, uh, what, what happened was the leaf spring broke. And when it broke, the truck sat down, uh, the drive shaft came apart and then asked to turn. So the truck quit on Kentucky Street. Uh, we got it towed to the shop and the guys are disassembling it. Uh, but the parts that are needed is about sixty-three hundred dollars. I sent you an invoice for that. I thought we would have done it already, but the parts won't be in until Friday. And so we need authorization to spend the sixty-three hundred dollars on parts to repair that truck. This residential garbage truck. What we typically do when the residential garbage truck goes down is we use the hauler mower. Uh, because he's now acquired a second and a third truck. Uh, it's on that he bring multiple trucks when we need them, uh, to try to keep up with the garbage rate, uh, route. So we'd been asking for approval to buy the parts that exceed five thousand dollars for the repair of residential garbage truck number fifty-five.
Repair garbage truck.
Yes, sir.
So?
Yeah, I'm saying.
I was doing. There's a motion to repair the garbage truck.
Motion, David's second.
Look, I, I, I was, my mom was texting me about my nephew. I was like, okay, uh, Ms. Miller, Ms. Smith.
Ms. Davis moved.
Davis second.
Sackland, to repair to, that's medical, Colorado. I'm trying to make sure everybody okay.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Sackland. Mr. Appleby?
Yes.
And Ms. Davis.
Is there a beat to it?
That's all, move to your.
Second.
Second.
All right. Thank you all.